We're going to launch it on YouTube. Hello, everyone. My name is Ron Booth and on behalf of the South Fulton Coalition Board of Directors, we'd like to welcome you to this town hall forum for the County Commissioner for District Five. Just a little bit about South Fulton Coalition. The mission of the South Fulton Coalition is to implement action programs such as this town hall for the continued improvement, integrity, and accountability of the city of South Fulton and its elected officials. I'd like to quickly go over with you a few ground rules. Candidates, we're going to give you both three minutes apiece to make your opening remarks. And if you'll please be mindful of the time, we'll give you a 30-second warning before your time is expiring. And then in addition, we'll also field questions from the audience and you'll have two minutes apiece to respond to those questions from the audience. And audience, if you'd like to ask a question, please use the reaction features to raise your electronic hand and we'll recognize you and take you off mute and ask you to ask your question. If you don't want to ask it on camera or on audio, then just type your question into the chat and we'll ask that question for you. Now disruptions of any kind are not going to be tolerated in this meeting. This will be your only warning and then we'll just have to exit you out of the room. So with that, I'd like to introduce our moderator for tonight, Ms. Yoshina Bradford. Yoshina, your show. Unmute yourself, please.
I'm sorry. Look, I already got to hit myself. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ron. I'm Yoshina Cobra Bradford. I'll be your moderator this evening. I'm a native of Atlanta. I was born in College Park, reared into southwest Atlanta, where I currently reside in Lockloman Estates. I'm a graduate of Benjamin E. May's High School, student of Mercer University, and owner broker of Coburn and Associates Real Estate. So before we get started and move any further, I would like to introduce Pastor Christopher A. Wimbley of Honey Hill First Missionary Baptist Church. He will be doing the prayer. All right, Pastor. Let me unmute. Let me see. Let me see if I can find his number. Pastor Wimbley? All right, we just had him. I apologize. Now, we know we have somebody who can jump right in. It was just a few minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Perfect.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Let me say good evening to everyone. And at this time, let us have a Lord of Prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you so much for this day. Lord, as we come before you now, Lord God, we just thank you for this time of gathering, this time of meeting. Lord God, we even pray right now, Lord God, for our county. Lord, we pray for our district. God, we even pray right now for the candidates. God, I pray even, Lord God, that you would be in the midst of this meeting today, Lord God. I pray right now, Lord God, that you would give them wisdom, oh God, and knowledge, oh God, to do what needs to be done. Lord, we look unto you, Lord God, for, Lord, we know all of our help comes from you. Lord, you told us in your word, God, in all that we do, lean not to our own understanding, Lord God, but look unto you. You shall direct our path. And so, God, we pray in all that we do that you order our steps. And, Lord God, all that is said and done, you get the glory. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Wimbley.
No problem.
All right. Well, we'll get started. Welcome, Commissioner Arrington. Welcome, Robert Kelly. And I want to say thank you both for coming on this evening. Thank you for just stepping up for the opportunity to be a candidate and running for office. We know that is a big deal and a big service. So once we get started, I will say you have three minutes each for introduction. Okay? And we will start with Robert Kelly for the first introduction.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert H. Kelly. I am a 17-year permanent resident of South Fulton County. I have been married to my beautiful wife for nine years. We have two awesome children, Lily, who's actually her birthday is today. She's turning four. So feel free to tell her her birthday in the comments. And I also have a son, Levi, who will be two next month. As far as my educational background, I have a law degree from the University of Georgia. I also have a master's in public administration from the University of Georgia. That makes me a double dog. And I have a master of arts in pastoral counseling, as I've been in the ministry for some time now. In terms of my work history, I've been an employee in one aspect or another of Fulton County for the past seven years. During that time, I initially started out in the county, under the county manager's office, working for the clerk of commission. And one of the great philosophers of our day by the name of Drake often says, "Started from the bottom, now we're here." And one of the great things about starting from the bottom of something is that when you walk your way up from the bottom, you begin to understand the organization you're working with intimately. When you're part of something that actually builds the organization, you understand, just like a clock, what makes it tick. And when you understand what makes something tick, you also understand what to do when it stops ticking. And in Fulton County, we have a lot of systems that have stopped ticking. And so I'm offering myself to be part of the solution, to begin allowing Fulton County to begin working as it should once again. Currently, in Fulton County Board of Commissioners, we have five commissioners that live in Atlanta. We have two that live in North Fulton and we have zero that live in South Fulton County. I'll say that again. We have zero commissioners currently on the Board of Commissioners that live in South Fulton County. So as the only South Fulton candidate, I'm offering up myself for service to be part of the solution and give South Fulton County a voice. I'm looking to be the representation that South Fulton County needs. And so I look forward to a healthy discussion today. Please check out my website. I'll say it again and I'll put it in the chat. It's robkellyforcommissioner.com and I look forward to all of your questions. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Arrington.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marvin Arrington Jr., your Fulton County Commissioner for District Five currently. Happy to be here tonight and glad that you all have joined us as well. Number one, I'm an attorney, a practicing attorney. Not only did I graduate from law school, but I passed a bar exam and have been practicing law for 25 years. I have been acclaimed by my peers. I have been acclaimed by my peers as a super lawyer. And for the third year in a row, our firm has received top music lawyers by Billboard Magazine. Additionally, as commissioner, I have been certified by the University of Georgia and the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia as a certified county commissioner, which means I have taken the courses and trained, been trained by the, again, University of Georgia and Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. I want to take some time to talk about five signature events that I host out of my office. The first is the Black History Film Festival, which I host annually. I host this event for high school students. We do a film and essay competition annually and we give away $2,000 from privately sourced funds to our high school students, most from Westlake High School, Tri-Cities, and also from Thera. Additionally, I do an annual writerize summer writing program for our youth because I believe in our youth. Now, they may be only 10% of our population, but they are 90% of our future. So I do an annual writerize summer writing program where we train middle and high school students on different forms of writing. So one week we bring in a blogger, one week we bring in a poet, one week we bring in a novelist to expose them to different types of writing and to keep them trained and to keep their skills home during the summer months. The third signature initiative from my office is my annual It Takes a Village essay contest for college students, where we give away $10, $500 scholarships to college students every year. So very proud of this and we've done this every year that I've been in office. Two more events, my Blanket of Love Drivers Annual Event, my Dad's Daughters and Dolls Event is where I give Christmas gifts to the children of inmates in the Fulton County jail. Proud to have the opportunity to represent you and I look forward to earning your vote.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arrington, for that. All right. We will start off, sorry. We will start off with the first question and I will ask you two questions before we get to the citizens, okay? The first question, and I'll have Commissioner Arrington answer first, is what is the role of Fulton County Commissioner?
So the role of a Fulton County Commissioner, basically, we are responsible for managing the policies of Fulton County. We're also responsible for managing the $1 billion a year annually that we collect. About 650 million of that is in our general fund and the remaining 350 million or so is in various different other funds. So as commissioners, we are responsible for setting the policies of Fulton County. And additionally, we are also responsible for setting the budget of Fulton County, which in turn sets the priorities of the county. We spend about $100 million a year on our jail. So that is certainly one of our biggest priorities. But I'm always working to try to increase the amount of money that we spend on social services. And so because I do live in South Fulton, anything below I-20 is South Fulton. I guess it depends on your definition of South Fulton. Certainly there is the city of South Fulton and then there is South Fulton in general. But, and I lived in the city of South Fulton from 2004 until 2017. And right now, I live right next door to the city of South Fulton on Enon, off of County Line Road, off of Campbellton and County Line, Lockloman. I can walk to that in 30 seconds.
All right. Thank you. Candidate Kelly? You're muted.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question for me? I just want to make sure I hear it fully.
Okay. Perfect. What is the role of the Fulton County Commissioner?
Thank you. And so being, since the city of South Fulton became its own city, we are about 99.9% municipalized, which means that within Fulton County, most of the services that we were doing before, now the cities have now do those services. And so we are primarily a legislative body. And so it was interesting, as you know, the incumbent was listing his accomplishments, we heard very little legislation, being that that's what we primarily do as a Board of Commissioners body, is that we are a legislative and policy body. In addition to that, we do set the mileage rate and the budget. Currently, last budget, as was said, was about $1.2 billion. And that does really show what the initiatives and the agenda for the county will be. We do senior services. We do behavioral health, mental services, behavioral health. And we do, and I would hopefully that we are increasing to do youth services because that's an area that we have significantly been lacking. Most times I tell people is that a good way to kind of gauge what the Fulton County Board of Commissioners do is that whatever the city doesn't do and whatever you can't see from the state, most times that's going to be the middle area of what the Fulton County does. And as the Board of Commissioners, we set the... Thank you. We set, of course, the policies and initiatives of where we want to see the county go in those areas.
Okay. Before we do a rebuttal, I would like to ask my second question. My second question, what are the areas that your district will cover and what is your district, so that we can let the citizens know?
So my current district, District Five, runs from the DeKalb County borderline, which includes Grant Park. It includes portions of Districts One, Two, Four, Five, and Six in the city of Atlanta, as well as portions of District, all of District 12 and portions of District 11, as well as 90% of East Point, small parts of College Park and Union City along Roosevelt Highway, and Districts One and Two in the city of South Fulton. The new District Five covers the cities of Chattahoochee Hills and the new districts will take effect starting January 1, 2023. The new District Five will cover the cities of Chattahoochee Hills, Palmetto, Fairford, Union City, 95% of the city of South Fulton, about 60% of the city of College Park, and about 30 to 40% of the city of East Point. And so those areas will be the, are the district as outlined by the legislature.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Arrington. Is there anything that you would like to add, candidate Kelly?
No, that's a pretty factual question. So I look forward to answering the next question.
All right. Thank you. And just after I faded, was there anything that you would like to add, Commissioner? You have 45 seconds as a rebuttal to what Mr. Kelly said previously, candidate Kelly.
I guess I'll just say briefly that although I have moved in 2018 back into the city of Atlanta, my law firm has opened an office as of last year in the city of South Fulton, on Roosevelt Highway, 3527 Roosevelt Highway. So I'm a business owner in the city of South Fulton.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Arrington. All right. We'll move to the citizens right now. And it looks like we have a hand raised by Ray.
Hey.
Is Ray there?
Okay. Yeah, I tried to unmute. It muted me back, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I have a quick question for both candidates. The Fulton County has a reparations task force. So I would like to know from both candidates and the incumbent and the, well, both y'all are candidates, but the state of California, they also have a reparations task force and they were having some issues with eligibility and who qualifies for reparations. And it's our humble opinion that reparations, well, we know reparations is owed to the descendants of American chattel slavery. So will you both ensure, if elected, that the people that you select to be on the task force understand that reparations is owed specifically to the descendants of American chattel slavery? If not, it can't be called reparations. So what are you guys' thoughts on that?
Well, thank you so much for that question, Ray. I am the one that, in fact, started the reparations committee. It was my idea and it was at my urge. I'm excited that we have it and they have actually been in contact with the California Reparations Committee and had those people speak at their last meeting. And so I'm keeping up with the progress. One of the reasons that I did it was I saw there was a town in Illinois, right side out of Chicago, that basically paid some amount of reparations to all of the black citizens. And I said, hey, you know, if they're doing that, we can do it here in Fulton County. And hopefully it can catch on and it can start locally and then grow nationally. I believe that we are entitled to reparations, happy to start the committee, excited about the appointee that I appointed, Mr. Marcus Coleman. He's very excited about working on it and we have, I think we have a good committee and they're moving forward. I think they've adopted their bylaws and they're moving forward with doing an analysis. I believe that what will likely come out of it will be that we will need to invest some money to do a study to determine the amount of money that may or may not be due for reparations from Fulton County in particular. Now, there may be other cities or organizations like the state or other entities that might also owe reparations. But this specific task force is trying to determine how much, if any...
Yeah, 30 seconds, Commissioner.
You, thank you. This specific task force is determined, and then they're going to carve their own choice, but I think it's determine how much, if any, should Fulton County pay in reparations.
All right. Candidate Kelly? Candidate Kelly King?
Yeah, thank you. It's not letting us unmute ourselves.
Okay. I apologize.
No, no problem. So if I could just back up with the process that we used to create these task forces and boards in general. We have a system that is currently not working efficiently. The task force that Commissioner Marvin Arrington, yes, he did start, but it has stalled simply because they don't have enough members currently on the board to pass anything. I was called by the chair of that board, which is Mr. Marcus Coleman, and he was asking us to help to get the requisite amount of people on that board so that they could even be functional. We did, the District Six Office nominated Mayor Khalid Kamau. As you know, he's a very progressive thinker and he is someone who I believe will take the initiative that was at the heart of starting this board, you know, to the next level. However, one of the things that I really feel that we need to work on as a board is that when we start these things like task force, they need to be situated in a department. Because what will happen is that, as we see with many of the boards and task force, is that they are created as political tools to say, "I did something," and then they end up doing nothing because they're not situated in a department that can actually, you know, support the funding and the initiatives of the board. So what we need to start doing is not simply creating boards so that we can say that we're doing something, but actually having an underpinning to each board, connecting them to a department so that the department can help to fund and to give them direction. We currently have many boards that are sitting under the Board of Commissioners right now that are not functional at all.
Yeah, 30 seconds, candidate Kelly.
Thank you. And that is simply because they are not housed in a department. So one of the first things I want to do is to work through and make all of our boards functional by actually housing them under the department where they can get direction. Commissioner Arrington also started a veterans board. We put a person on that board and they're still saying, "Hey, we don't have enough direction." That should be housed in a department so that the department can give them direction and let them know how to run that board efficiently.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to take another question from hand raised. And before we take the next question after Keith Hilsman, after he has his question, I will move over to Ron Booth to ask questions from the chat. Okay?
Do I get to rebuttal on that last point?
Absolutely. That is the ground rule, so we'll give you 45 seconds. Yes, Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you. The reason that Marcus Coleman called my opponent was because the commissioner from District Six had not appointed anyone. The commission was meeting without full appointments. The commission can still meet and receive the information. They just can't take any action until all the commissioners make their appointments. So the reason that he got a call was because the commissioner failed to make an appointment.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Now we'll move to Keith Hilsman.
Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for participating in this very informative forum. Commissioner Arrington, you are my commissioner up until January of this year. I live in the eastern part of the county. But one question I do want to ask, I do remember your first couple of years as commissioner, even though Old National Highway wasn't a part of your district or South Fulton wasn't a part of your district, I think you had the vision and the foresight to start a study regarding sidewalks. Can you tell us the status of the study and the $300,000 that went towards that, please?
Before Commissioner answers, this is just for Commissioner Arrington, correct? I just want to clarify. They muted him back. I'm going to say yes. So Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Yoshina. Yes, my first meeting as commissioner, I commissioned a $300,000 study for sidewalks on Enon Road. I'm happy to report that the board will be installing those sidewalks on Enon Road connecting the Wolf Creek Amphitheater and the Wolf Creek Library. And I'm hopeful that we will get those sidewalks to go all the way up to Alders Road so that the people from Wolf Creek Subdivision and Wolf Creek Chase and other nearby subdivisions will also have the opportunity to use it. In fact, I'm hoping that we will be able to have that sidewalk wrap all the way around over to Merck Road so that they can be connected and it can virtually serve as an expansion of the existing walking trail, the Wolf Creek Walking Trail, which was one of my brainchild projects as well. So I'm very excited about the Wolf Creek Walking Trail that we have, very excited that we have sidewalks coming to Enon Road, connecting, again, the amphitheater and the library. And hopefully we'll be working soon...
30 seconds, Commissioner.
...to help provide resources to the city of South Fulton for sidewalks on Old National. Sidewalks are very badly needed on Old National. And so I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that those resources are provided.
All right. And thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to move to Ron Booth to see if we have any questions in the chat. Just to be fair, I know some people have been putting questions in the chat.
Thank you, Yoshina. This question comes from Keith Hilsman. And Keith, if you would, expound on your question if I don't ask it correctly, but it simply says, "What about funding the courts and what about public health?" What are your thoughts on both of those?
I'll let candidate Kelly go first on that one.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. And that question was about, when you were asking what the functions of a commissioner does, candidate Kelly didn't even talk about courts or public safety or public health.
Okay. Miss Hill.
Thank you. I just want to go back really quick to what he just said about this study for sidewalks, which he said there was a $300,000 study for sidewalks six, seven years ago. And so this is what I mean when I say that we do a lot of things. There's a lot of talk, but there's not a lot of action. It's just interesting that we would now during election time be getting sidewalks on Enon Road and then as an afterthought, talk about sidewalks on Old National. To me, I believe that, you know, we need to be looking at what we are doing holistically, not just what we can do now that it's election time when you had the opportunity to do it in the last seven years. When we did a, I believe we said it was 2015, that the study was done, we are now in 2022. If you couldn't get it done in, what, seven years? It's time to move along and help hopefully get someone that could get in office and get things done a little bit more efficiently. Now, when it comes to what Mr. Hill's men said, yes, when I spoke about the budget, I did not list everything that the budget entails because it would take too long. So yes, we do provide funding for courts as well, but simply because of the question of what we do was asked, I simply said that we do the budget, just like Commissioner Arrington did. And so, yes, the court is one of those as well. But my question would be, how long does it take to push forth the policy? I mean, it only takes four votes. And to me, it's been time. And at this point, time's up.
30 seconds, candidate Kelly.
I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. So it takes at least five years to do any of these things. It starts with a study. You have to get engineering plans. The roundabouts were approved at the same time and they are just being built now as well. And so this is not something that can be done overnight. And, you know, it frankly just shows naivety. It can't be done overnight. It's not possible. It takes a minimum of five years to do any construction project. You have to have plans. construction project. Uh, you have to have plans. You have to do RFP, has to go out for bid. As commissioner, I, all I did was set the policy forth. I brought it forth. I got four commissioners to pass it. That's my role. After that, it goes to staff for them to implement. And so the staff has been digitally, uh, diligently implementing, but as everyone knows, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the city of South Fulton was created. And so that function got transferred to the city of South Fulton from Fulton County. And so, uh, you know, that is the reason that it takes time. That is the reason that it has taken this long, but it, it gets done. The, 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 the money to do the roundabouts came from Congressman David Scott in the thirteenth district providing federal funds for which the county put up matching funds. And so those federal funds were put up before.
All right. Commissioner and, uh, candidate Kelly, before we move forward, I do see in the chat, I think it's interrupting people that I say thirty seconds. Would you prefer for me just when time is up, just to say time is up? Would you like me to kind of, can you see me to wave my hand to say thirty seconds? Can you see me, Commissioner Arrington?
Again, I have no right to thirty seconds, but if the audience doesn't like it, you know, uh, we go the majority rules.
Okay. Can you see me, candidate Kelly? Okay.
If you need to me, I, I can, I can, I can see it.
Okay. So thirty seconds, I'll wave my hand and then when it's time, I'll just say time. We're gonna go to KB. He has a question. Can we unmute KB? Oh, he's already unmuted.
Yes, I'm unmuted. Thank you. Uh, my question has to do with the maps that are recent, that were recently, um, unveiled to show the redistricting for, um, I believe it's District, uh, three, five and six or four, five and six. There's been a lot of discussion around these maps and a lot of, you know, negative comments about the maps. So I'd like to hear from both of our candidates, um, what your thoughts are on the, the new maps. And if you are opposed to them, if you can give us an explanation as to why you would be opposed to the, to the new mapping and the districting as it is going to be laid out for twenty twenty-three and beyond.
All right. Thank you, KB. I'll go to Commissioner Arrington for that question.
Thank you. Uh, the, the maps are what they are. So, you know, we have to, uh, like everything else in life, uh, we have to just deal with it as it is. Uh, what I'm disappointed in is the fact that we had one Democratic commissioner and one Democratic state rep circumvent the entire Fulton County Democratic delegation and work with Republicans to pass, uh, a map that, uh, completely changed all the districts in South Fulton only. Didn't change the North Fulton districts, only the South Fulton districts. Uh, and you, you, when you look at the map, it's interesting because it, the numbers go four, six, five. And five is at the bottom. Uh, and so we all know that five comes before six. But the, the maps are what they are. Um, certainly it is, uh, a lot easier to run in a district where you've been working and serving for eight years. Those people know the work and the service that you've been doing because you've actually been serving them. Um, but, you know, the, the maps are what they are. I'm, I'm disappointed that the Democratic delegation was not allowed uh, to draw the maps. Typically, any bill that the Democratic delegation or that any local delegation puts forward is adopted by the entire General Assembly. Uh, and in this case, um, the, the, the entire Democratic delegation was circumvent.
All right, candidate Kelly.
Sure. Uh, thank, I, I thank for that question. Um, what I will say is that anyone who is looking at the maps, what it was before and what it was now, if they're being totally unbiased, you, they, they would have to honestly say that the map that is now that we are now working with, it's a better map. It's a cleaner map and it is a map that works more for South Fulton County to be able to have uh, adequate representation. Um, I, I, we, what, what these maps did is that it undid what the Republicans at the state did in twenty thirteen when they forced Commissioner Emma Donnell to run against, uh, the then Commissioner Bill Edwards. And we pretty much lost our, 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 our voice and we lost our vote um, on the Board of Commissioners. And so this, what this map does is that it, it, it puts it back to where it was before the, the political interference of the Republicans, uh, that, uh, in twenty thirteen at the state. Um, you know, to, to, to talk about numbers, one, two, three, four, five, and where the position, to me, it's irrelevant. Um, what is relevant is that, um, there are more whole communities that are together, uh, despite how it could have happened. What, what, let's look at what is the result. The result is that we have more communities that are together, less segmentation and a more cohesive map. And that should, e- everyone should be proud of. You know, when, uh, Commissioner Arrington, uh, testified in front of the Georgia Assembly, we know what he was doing is that he, he was actually saying that, uh, he didn't know those people down there. That's actually his word. He says, I don't know those people. And he, uh, I would say vigorously advocated to not represent these people, uh, in South Fulton County. And now he's running on, I love South Fulton. When, when it came down time to talk to the, to the General Assembly, he was trying to not serve us. And so now you want to be our voice when you were at the General Assembly advocating to not be our voice. He, he needs to make up his mind. And we South Fulton County representative and that person is.
Thank you, candidate Kelly. All right. We're gonna move to Ron.
I've, I've gotta respond to that.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second, Commissioner Arrington. Ron, do we have questions in the chat?
Yes, we have several. This next, uh, question comes from M. Ross. And, uh, I don't see a first name typed there. So, um, M. Ross, if you type your name in there, I'll go ahead and ask your question. Uh, Commissioner Arrington, this question is for you. How do you feel about a present or former employee running for office against an incumbent?
Um, I don't, I don't have any feelings about it. Uh, the resign to run rule is a Georgia constitutional standard that is contained in the Georgia constitution and has been adopted by most municipalities throughout the state. Fulton County had the same rule in place and somehow it was removed in twenty seventeen. So when we learned that that was, despite the fact that it was removed, the rule was still enforced against two employees, uh, Commissioner Natalie Hall, uh, and Commissioner Joe Carr, despite the fact that it was removed. Um, and so when we had the opportunity to learn that it had been removed, we voted, uh, to reinstate the constitutional rule of the resign to run rule.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Arrington. I see your hand, candidate Kelly, but it was just, that question was just for Arrington. We're gonna keep with the ground rules and I will give him forty-five seconds to rebuttal really quickly. Commissioner Arrington?
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, I guess my name was mentioned previously. Mr. Kelly said something to the effect that I said, I don't know those people down there. I lived in the city of South Fulton. My children, my oldest daughter graduated from Westlake in twenty eighteen. She attended Stonewall Town Elementary, Sandtown Middle School. All four of my daughters have attended Stonewall Town Elementary. Three of them attended Sandtown and two of them attended Westlake. Fulton County schools are good enough for my children. I did not have to move to Fayette County for better schools.
All right. Thank you for that. We're gonna move to a question from a citizen, Mel Keaton. Hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. Mel Keaton.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is a question for both candidates and incumbent. As you know, the city of South Fulton has, uh, been growing. But in return, the infrastructure has not grown, meaning the, uh, sewer and water system. What funds are being put aside to uh, catch up with the building that we have going on to support the infrastructure or old or outdated infrastructure? And what is the plan on that?
Thank you so much for your question. I'm gonna go to candidate Kelly.
Uh, sure. I, I, and I think that's, that's a great question. Uh, one of the things that I believe that the Board of Commissioners, um, and in this position, we have the opportunity to do is be a more active voice and ambassador for our cities. Uh, with the, we recently, uh, had the opportunity to apply for a hundred million dollars with the water and sewer fund from the federal government and Fulton County simply did not apply for it. Um, why did not, we not apply for it? You know, who knows? But the, the, what we have the opportunity to do moving forward is to, that, that this position as a commissioner, we should be actively um, aware of what is coming down the pipeline and what can be used for our cities and what could be used for our municipalities in our areas. That, I believe that that was a failure of the Fulton County system to not have applied for that fund and those funds and funnel it down to our municipalities that could have desperately used it. When we talk about infrastructure, um, you know, in, in Palmetto and Chattahoochee Hills, we don't have broadband. They're, they're struggling to get broadband. Um, we have a lot of money that's coming down from the federal government, um, and, and with the infrastructure bill. And this is an opportunity for Fulton County, uh, us being an umbrella to, to really advocate for more dollars, just like, uh, I did last year, uh, when we went to Washington and I was able to speak with John Ossoff and, and actually advocate to pull more that those money, that money down to our area. And so, uh, when I become commissioner, when the great people of South Fulton County is what I was talking about before, not just City of South Fulton, South Fulton County, elect me to be the next District Five Commissioner, that's one of the things that I would do, advocate to get federal funding so that we can have, uh, more water and sewer, uh, you know, development in our cities.
All right, Commissioner Arrington.
So, um, the responsibility of water in South Fulton, uh, from Fulton County standpoint, uh, not even just South Fulton, but City of Atlanta, East Point, the cities are responsible for their water. However, the county routinely works with cities to help with water and sewer easements uh, and typically provides money to help typically matching funds, uh, to help the cities with projects uh, like water main, uh, projects, uh, moving water mains, moving pipes. Uh, and so that responsibility does not fall squarely within, uh, the lap of the county. But the county does work well with all the cities to help them, uh, with any problems that they have. In North Fulton County, Fulton County actually provides the water system. We get our water from the City of Atlanta. And so there are different systems in place. Um, and so that, I think is the answer to your question.
All right. Thank you. We're gonna go to Larry Riley next for the next question. And then after that, we'll go back to Ron for the chat.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ron.
Hey, this is for Mr. Arrington. I heard you earlier that you say you still need some more people for the, the reparations task force. Uh, do you know which commissioners have not, uh, selected, uh, any, uh, anyone for the task force?
My understanding at this time is that the three northern commissioners have not appointed anyone to the task force. I believe that we do have four members, uh, which is enough for it for.
Yeah, I have, uh, I do have, I, I have, uh, looks like I'm Karthik Sims, Marcus Coleman, uh, Mayor Khalid and Janae Wilborn. Is that accurate?
You know, I don't, I don't wanna start quoting names. That sounds accurate, but I, I don't have the information in front of me, but.
Now, those, uh, those commissioners, I see that you had Natalie Hall, uh, Khadija, and you have, uh, you have selected, uh, or may, or may have selected, Khadija may have selected someone. That leaves, uh, the three northern, northern commissioners. And you're saying that those three have not selected anyone. Is that right?
I, I can answer that question. That, that's correct. Um, and just, just add to what Commissioner Arrington said. Uh, when, when Marcus Coleman called me, we already had nominated, uh, Mayor Khalid. Uh, what, uh, the chairman had not yet, um, nominated Ms. Wilborn. And that was the fourth one that was needed to start having the call.
Yeah, yeah, cuz my only, my only question is, I see three, three southern, but it's, it's four people on the task force. So they, they're one of those northern, so like one person or did?
Right. Mr. Ron, hold on, Commissioner Arrington. Let me just clarify. He was just asking about the task force. It looks like you, you already asked, answered that question and that was you're waiting on the three North Fulton to choose someone to be on that task force, even though you already have a form with the four that's already been chosen, correct?
Correct. And they were against the task force. They didn't want the task force in the first place. So, you know, I'm, I'm not surprised that they haven't nominated anyone.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Ron will like to move to the chat for a question. I'm pretty sure you have a lot of questions in the chat.
We do. And I'm skipping over a couple because Larry Riley just asked his question. So I'm skipping over that one in the chat. Uh, this next question is from Monique McCoy. And Mr. Kelly, this one's for you. She states that she believes your experience as an employee will prove beneficial in your role as an elected official. In light of that, what is one thing you've learned about how the commission as a whole functions that you would like to improve or enhance after you're elected?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I think that's, I think that's a great question. Um, currently, uh, I don't believe that there is enough, uh, discussions before, uh, legislation is put forward. A lot of times what we have seen this past year particularly is legislation being written during the meeting. Um, and what it shows is that people, uh, commissioners, um, aren't doing the work outside of the commission meetings. Um, if we looked at just, uh, some of the past meetings, uh, some, some of the legislation that was, that was actually being almost developed on the spot, which shows that there's not enough collaboration and there's not enough information and research that's done to make sure that what we are putting forth is actually good sense, common sense policy. What we need moving forward in Fulton County is to create policies that are going to be sustainable, efficient and effective. We have too much segmentation in Fulton County policies. For example, with, with, with the veterans, uh, uh, legislation that, uh, Commissioner Arrington, uh, recently put forth. Um, it, it was, it was without structure, even though it took a long time to come in. What we saw was that we have a CSP program currently right now. And there was no details on, on how the, the veterans part of it actually was to inter, interact with the CSP. And for, for you, those of you don't know, um, CSP is the Community Service Program. They serve veterans as well. And now we have another initiative that also serves veteran. I think it was, you know, to give him credit. I think it was a good, you know, million dollars, but I think it needed much more details and planning. And that's a mean that we don't need, uh, see. And what that does is that it creates, uh, one further segmentation, which means that we have money allocated in different places that often doesn't get used. And when money doesn't get used, we ra, we're raising the budget, we're raising taxes and when we don't need to. So we need more efficient programming, more efficient legislation and to make sure that the, that what we do put forth makes sense all the way around the board.
Perfect time. All right. We're gonna go to a next question from Gwen F. Gwen F.
Yes. Um, my question is, can you give us a timeframe on the sidewalks for Old National? We were told about them when Emma Donnell was commissioner. And, uh, when we became a city, we had a meeting, uh, letting them know what, exactly what we wanted in the city. And we've never, since Emma Donnell passed away, we haven't had another commissioner to come out here to see what we want.
All right. Thank you, Gwen F. Is that gonna be for both candidates, correct?
No, that's just for Marvin Arrington.
Arrington. Okay. Thank you. Good. Arrington, Keith, let's unmute it.
He's on, he's on mute still. I think he's trying to speak.
Okay. Can we get?
Thank you. It would not allow me to unmute. Um, yes, ma'am, I would be happy to come out there and meet with you. I'm so sorry that since Emma Donnell, you have not had a commissioner come out there. There have been two since that time, but, um, I'm happy to come out there. Uh, I did not learn about the sidewalk issue, uh, in Old National until last year sometime, I wanna say second or third, third or fourth quarter of twenty twenty-one. Um, so I'm certainly sensitive to the issue. Um, did not know that the issue had been around that long. But I, again, my district included Districts two and three in the city of South Fulton. And so there is basically a thing called. And so there is basically a thing called district courtesy. And so I wouldn't do anything inside Commissioner Darnell's or any other commissioner's district out of courtesy for them, especially not without at least talking to them or going to them first. Um, you know, give them the opportunity to represent their district. But, uh, with new lines being drawn and District Five being at the bottom, uh, and now being, and as me serving as a District Five County Commissioner, uh, I certainly am gonna do any and everything possible to make sure that we do at least our portion. I think the city has asked for five hundred thousand dollars, uh, towards sidewalks. And so, um, the sidewalks and streets have been turned over to the City of South Fulton. But certainly, uh, I believe and I will be advocating strongly, uh, for us to contribute the five hundred thousand dollars that was requested, uh, by the City of South Fulton for sidewalks on Old National.
All right, thank you. Just, we only have two more hands that are raised. We'll go to the last two citizens with their hands raised, questions, and then we'll go to Ron for all of the other questions. Sorry about that, in the chat. Medina? Medina?
I didn't mean to have my hand raised. My question's in the chat.
Yeah, okay, thank you. If you don't mind, could you lower your hand if you, if you can? Thank you. Next we have, it looks like CF Dr. Francis Roll. All right.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. Um, I think I have a quick comment and a question. Um, it's my understanding that Fulton County has returned several million dollars in the past several years. Some went back that was funded for AIDS. It's my understanding, um, not too long ago, there was funding that was being returned for, um, low income housing for folks that live in Fulton County. And also now I'm hearing that Fulton County has several million dollars that is going to be returned to the federal government that was earmarked for, um, nonprofit organizations to fund them for businesses, uh, to fund for nonprofit activities. Um, if both the candidate and the commissioner could elaborate on that, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Francis Roll, repeat your question one more time, a little bit slower, so we can make sure that both candidates heard it. Oh, sorry, I should just mute it back. Can we unmute Dr. Francis Roll? Did you, did the candidates get the question?
Okay, I was blocked from getting back on. So my question is, am I correct? Or is it, is it correct that there is several million dollars that is being earmarked to return to the federal government in June of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two? That has been earmarked for nonprofit organizations, um, small businesses to do nonprofit activities in the South Fulton community?
Okay, so we'll go with Commissioner Arrington first, and then I will end with candidate Kelly. Commissioner Arrington.
Okay, thank you all. I think there was some story a while ago about some money being AIDS money being returned, but that was at least five or six years ago. Um, there was also, uh, something last year about, uh, maybe two years ago, two, two or three years ago, with the COVID and lost track of these years, uh, uh, about HUD funding being returned. And I was adamantly against that. Uh, our cities, our mayors, our constituents came and spoke, uh, and let us know that they were against it. And I stood with them. And I still stand with them. Uh, so, um, I think there was, there was something else that you said. You said the AIDS funding, you said, uh, the HUD funding, and there was a third item that I don't recall about the Francis.
The third item is this year, I'm told that there was, there's money earmarked to be returned to the federal government that was earmarked for nonprofit organizations, small businesses to do nonprofit activities in Fulton County. And, um, told that if that money is not, um, distributed before June, that it goes back to the federal government.
I, I am unaware of any such funds. We have done, we have expanded our programs. We expanded our community services program, uh, last year to include, uh, to double, to actually grant every request that was submitted. Uh, and so we doubled the amount of money that we normally give out. We did seventeen million for small businesses, seventeen million for arts organizations and artists. Um, and so I'm, I'm unaware of any money for nonprofit organizations, uh, that has gone back. Typically, every year we do about a million to one point five million for arts and arts organizations. And we also do about three and a half million every year, uh, to, through our community services program to nonprofits to serve people in Fulton County. And so, uh, that is money that comes from our general fund. Now, we've gotten, you know, two batches of, that's time or thirty-seven?
Time.
Okay. We got two batches of, of federal money and we attempted to use all of it.
All right, thank you. Candidate Kelly.
Uh, sure, uh, what I, I'm, I'm not sure specifically what you're speaking of, but I will say that in 2020, uh, the, the North Fulton Republicans, along with Chairman Pitts, uh, was, uh, trying to give back the HUD money, uh, which goes to many of those services that you named, including AIDS, uh, because they said that there was too much red tape. They thought that there was too much red tape, um, even though we have a million dollar county manager's department, uh, that should adequately be able to, uh, you know, deal with any type of issue that has to do with, um, you know, uh, properly administrating grants. And, and so their, their solution was to send the money back. Uh, yes, we did have over a hundred people that came down, uh, from the community and spoke to that issue, and they decided that it was better to, uh, to not do away with HUD funding. But when we talk about how we're using a lot of the, the grants, uh, and, and, and money that's coming down from the federal government, uh, it is, it is important to, to discuss, um, that last year, we had the opportunity to give small business assistance and nonprofit assistance last year. Unfortunately, we had all the votes until Commissioner Marvin Arrington walked out of the meeting two times. And is the reason why we didn't get mortgage assistance, is the reason why we didn't get nonprofit assistance or, uh, or small business assistance last year. And then, uh, to add insult to injury, when he walked out and when we were saying how important it was for us to have those type of fundings, he made a joke saying that, uh, calling, uh, 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 calling, uh, Chris Khadija Chicken Little and saying that, that the sky was falling, only to eight, nine months later start advocating for the same thing. So when we talk about, um, you know, the importance of a lot of these funds coming down, we have to, we have to think about the people that are in these positions and what's really blocking some monies from hitting our communities. Last year, I, I believe a lot of it was ego. It was ego, um, when we could have had a lot of money for our community. Uh, we had people that are in these positions that put their discontent for one commissioner above the love for their community.
Thank you.
And that needs to end.
All right, and we will go to Ron, we'll go to Ron, Mr. Commissioner Arrington. Everyone, hold just a moment. We're gonna go to Ron to the chat for a question.
Thank you, Yushina. And I'm not gonna be reading any statements, only questions. So this next question comes from Craig Love. In light of COVID, are there any summer programs for the children in your district?
Thank you. Um, I'm, you know, very happy that we have worked on summer programs for our youth since 2015. Uh, when we had the slider crimes happening, my father's car was taken twice. They were targeting the elderly and they were targeting women. We worked with Daphne Jordan, Safer Communities in South Fulton and others to address, uh, the slider crimes issues by number one, providing jobs, and number two, providing skills training for our youth. And so I'm happy that, uh, we will, we attempted to get, uh, I attempted to get legislation on at the last meeting, uh, to allocate five hundred thousand dollars for youth summer jobs. Uh, and, uh, it was too, I submitted it too late for the deadline, so it'll be on the next meeting to make sure that we have, uh, five hundred thousand dollars to commit to our youth for summer jobs. Uh, again, I am completely committed to our youth. That's why I do so many programs, uh, with our youth. Now, as far as it concerns the budget, we allocated money. We, uh, my opponent is talking about, uh, a budget that was passed and saying that it was not passed when it in fact was. The problem with his commissioner is she has not learned how to work well with others, and she can't get anyone to support her votes. That's one of the first things that you have to learn as a commissioner, how to get others to vote with you so that you don't have to stand on an island. I, I've stood on that island before myself. It's not a fun place to be. But you have to learn that, that, that's the first rule that you have to learn. If you can't, if you can't get four votes, then you're in trouble. You're ineffective. And so, um, the, the, the funds passed, we had rental assistance, we had eighty-five million dollars of rental assistance. We had seventeen million for small businesses, seventeen million for arts organizations, uh, and, and other monies. And we've just gone back to get another fifty million.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I mean, Commissioner, I'm sorry. All right, candidate Kelly? You have two minutes. Oh, sorry, we have to get him unmuted. Can we unmute candidate Kelly? Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of, um, youth programs across the board. I think that that's one of the main things that, uh, is one of my, uh, platform statements is, uh, creating more youth initiatives. Um, last year during the heart of COVID, uh, while Commissioner Arrington's office was closed here at the, uh, South Fulton Annex and had been closed for over a year, to the point that they were using it as a storage closet, um, we were here and we were making sure that the, uh, the P, the, the T, the students that could no longer be, uh, in school getting, uh, food and wasn't getting food because they would normally be in school, we, we set up a program that would make sure that, um, they had meals delivered to, to them at their, at their homes. Um, I've actually also spearheaded, uh, what will be the, one of the first athletic symposiums, uh, in, on the south side of Fulton County, uh, partnering with many of the, uh, semi-pro, uh, basketball players who have joined our initiatives to begin, uh, you know, starting programs on this side of town to, uh, to create, uh, within our school systems, uh, after-school programs, mentoring programs. And so what we're looking to do is, is build greater partnerships across the board, uh, using things that people and our, and our young people are interested in, music, arts, um, and, and various types of education. One of the things I'm very passionate about is, um, getting, uh, young people into work-study programs, uh, where they can, while they're going to school, get the skills needed so that, because everyone, you know, is not, won't go to college. Everyone's not interested in college, but if we can start getting them interested in trade, uh, so that they can actually come out of high school with, uh, with a skill, that's something that I'm very, uh, passionate about working to, uh, get within Fulton County.
All right, thank you. We have several other questions in the chat. The time right now is eight oh five. I know we have a, we said we were gonna stop at eight thirty, but just to make sure if we go overtime, uh, Commissioner Arrington and candidate Kelly, are you all okay with just going over probably another additional fifteen minutes, maybe until nine o'clock?
Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to leave. I have another engagement, but I am committed to staying through eight thirty.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm here as long as the people would like to talk to me.
Okay, perfect. So we will go to Ron. He will go ahead with the next question in the chat. I think we have several.
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, Yushina. This next question is from Helen Cummings. She asks, when we talk about the City of South Fulton, what is the plan for the South Fulton Old National Corridor?
All right, we'll go to candidate Kelly to answer that one first.
Um, so the, the plan that I would like to see, um, in what I have been advocating for, I, let me, let me move back. I was here in, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen with Commissioner Darnell when the ribbon was cut for the Old National Sidewalks Program. And what's interesting to me is that, um, if I'm not mistaken, Old National and Enon Road are part of the IGA uh, with the City of South Fulton. And, you know, what's been said about Wolf Creek is that no one can talk about it, being that it's, it's part of litigation, yet we can openly discuss Enon Road and, and Old National, uh, even though, though that was part of the IGA as well. So we have to be consistent. You know, if, if we're gonna at one part say we can't discuss certain things because it's part of the IGA, and then in, in a, in a, in another breath say, uh, we, 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 we can't talk about Wolf Creek, uh, the issue is, everything needs four votes, uh, period. Uh, if, if the current commission wanted to, I wanted to have Wolf Creek, if they wanted us to have Enon Road, if they want us to have Old National, it would take four votes. Currently, we have Commissioner Khadija, we have Commissioner Marvin Arrington, we have Commissioner Natalie that votes, you know, with, with, you know, them ninety-nine percent of the time, we have Chairman Pitts. So it doesn't matter what North Fulton wanted, if, if the four people that are, that say that they are democratic and, um, are, uh, supporting this side of town would have voted for those three items, it would be passed. And so what I would say to everyone on the Old National Corridor is that it is insanity to, uh, to expect different results while voting for the same thing. We need change in that board, and we need change that's gonna be effective. And the current board is not working for the Old National Corridor. It hasn't been working for Enon Road. It has not been working for Wolf Creek. And so it's time for change.
All right, Commissioner Arrington.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
I think the question, let me get Ron back. Ron, can you repeat the question that was in the chat about the corridor?
I sure will. Um, when we talk about the City of South Fulton, what's the plan for South Fulton Old National Corridor?
So, um, the South Fulton Corridor, I think you're talking about South Fulton Parkway, is that correct?
He just says Old National, Old National Corridor.
Well, uh, I think we've gotta do more for Old National. Unfortunately, the commissioner that is there representing that area now has not been effective, been able to do anything, uh, for the residents there. Uh, and so, you know, I would be happy to take over the mantle, uh, and represent those constituents and work on their behalf. I've done, I've done so for the last eight years. Uh, I'm happy to stand on my record. I'm happy to stand on the work that I've done. I'm happy to stand on, um, the, the million dollars for veterans. I'm happy. But as we talk about the South Fulton Corridor, we have to make sure that we get our own, uh, that we get our fair share, which is, you know, one of the reasons that it makes it more difficult now having only one commissioner representing the area instead of having two. When you had two commissioners representing the area, you've got more votes. It's easier to get to seven. So, um, now with the way the maps have been redrawn, uh, it, it will be somewhat of a challenge to get more done because there will only be one commissioner representing the district. So, um, but yes, we, we have to do what we can. The vision I know for South Fulton Parkway is to have BRT going up, uh, to Douglas County, uh, and making that a, you know, uh, uh, expanding public transportation, uh, down Roosevelt Highway, uh, and over to, uh, South Fulton Parkway. Uh, but yes, we need to do more, uh, for Old National. Uh, and if the people choose me to be their representative, I will make sure that we get that done.
Thank you. Ron, do we have another question in the chat?
Yes, several more. And, uh, Commissioner Arrington, since you have to leave at eight thirty, I always tell me, recommend that you look at some of the questions in the chat and field some of them. They, they seem to be pretty important. This next question is from Medina, and it's for you specifically, Commissioner Arrington. Uh, she asked, as a sitting commissioner, you've displayed what seems like bouts of rage during various Board of Commission meetings, which also included walking out and leaving meetings resulting in a hundred and eighty thousand of your constituents' voices not being representative. Do you feel that you have any issues with anger management?
No, I'm, I'm passionate about my district, about my, uh, county and about my service. Uh, and sometimes that passion, I wear it on my shoulder, but I make no qualms about it. Um, and, and I have. and, and I have no anger management issues, uh, not whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll go to the next question. This one's also for you, Commissioner Arrington.
Okay, we'll go to the next one, Ron. Let me just say this. I'm, I'm, so if you see my face, I'm moving from the chat to the timer. So I apologize, but I am trying to monitor the chat as well. If we can constituents, just let's be respectful. Um, and I'm trying to make sure that everyone is being respectful in the chat. Um, if you have any questions, just post your question and keep them strictly to the community. What will affect us all. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Sorry.
Okay, not a problem. Uh, this next question is from Rashida Musa and it's for Commissioner Arrington. You've been advocating for mortgage assistance for the past Board of Commissioner meetings. However, you had an opportunity a year ago to provide needed assistance and walked out two to three times during the American Rescue Plan vote. Can you explain these actions and what you plan to do?
Uh, we passed the American Rescue Plan vote. Um, the one commissioner from District Six was upset because her plan did, did not get passed. But we passed the plan. We provided the money to the people. Uh, and because someone didn't get their plan approved, they got mad and ran out and said that the sky was falling. No, it's just an acorn. The sky is not falling. The world is not ending. The money will get used. The money will be spent. And that is exactly what we did.
Okay, moving to the next question for both candidates. Uh, this is from Rashawn Kemp. For both candidates, what ideas do you have in regards to having equitable access to quality healthcare south of I-20?
Well, we need to work on that. We just saw the announcement from Wellstar. Uh, we need to be holding them to the fire. They make over two billion dollars a year. And although they may be losing money at that facility, we need to be trying to do everything we can to make sure that they keep it open. Now, what they're saying is that they're closing that one and they're gonna keep it open for urgent care and that they're sending everyone to their downtown, uh, facility at AMC. But what they're not telling everyone is that they have plans on closing the downtown AMC within twelve months. So we had a meeting to talk about the options with Grady Hospital. I can, uh, convene the meeting with Grady and their representatives to talk about options that are available. Number one, could Grady purchase that hospital or could the Fulton DeKalb Hospital Authority purchase it on Grady's behalf and allow Grady to operate it? And they did such a good job of turning the operations of Grady around that perhaps they could turn the operations around there. However, the facility is so dated, it doesn't have the adequate, uh, restrooms and anything like that, that Grady said that they would rather start from ground up. However, Grady's first point was that they're not getting enough support for what they're currently doing. So I'm willing to commit whatever money we need to, even if we have to consider, uh, hospital tax of fifty, seventy-five, a hundred dollars per person. We've got to make sure that we have adequate healthcare. There are approximately twelve hospitals in North Fulton. And, and now we just went from one to zero in South Fulton.
All right, candidate Kelly.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think, I think that's a great question. Um, one of the things that I would say is it's, it's about building, uh, partnerships and working together to find the best solutions. Um, I, I'll put like this, and, and the way that I've been, uh, describing this situation, uh, it's kind of, kind of like, uh, the WNBA, right? Uh, you know, we all want, uh, uh, equal representation. We want the, the WNBA to succeed. But we have to make sure that we are engaging, uh, engaging, uh, the, the entity in order to make sure that, uh, it can, it can sustain and be equitable, right? Uh, just like the NBA is. And so at the end of the day, hospitals are businesses, right? And so if they are not seeing the amount of, uh, engagement from the community that would make them, uh, you know, be able to stay in business, as a business, they are going to, to, to try to, you know, uh, mediate their losses. And so what we have to do is to find new ways and, and reimagine new ways that we can use the parts of that building and that, uh, to, to, to make it profitable for them again. I think that takes, uh, strategizing. I think that takes sitting down with all the partners and, and making sure that we have, uh, something in South Fulton County, uh, that will work for everyone. Um, I'm not someone that is unrealistic, um, but I am someone that is community oriented and I want to make sure that, uh, the community is able to, to get all the services that it needs in the area that it needs it. Um, so just to, to put a, uh, in a night, nice pretty bow. Um, I think that we have to, to, to be sitting, uh, be able to sit down with all the people at the table and come up with a solution that will work with, with everyone, for everyone.
All right, thank you. Ron, next question.
Okay, these two questions are related, so I'm gonna ask them together for Commissioner Arrington. Uh, Rashawn Kemp has the first question and the second one comes from Rashida Musa. So the first one, what ideas do you have in regards to having, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The first question Rashida Musa, second question BK for Commissioner Arrington. Why did you not support the charge, charter and legislation for the city of South Fulton to become a city?
That is absolute falsehood. That is absolute falsehood. I did support the city of South Fulton. The North Fulton Commissioners voted to put a group home across from Welcome Mall Park. And I knew from that day forward that the city of South Fulton was the only way to go. And I worked very hard, uh, to help get the city passed. In fact, had the city passed in oh seven, we would not have all those warehouses. We would not have lost that land to Union City. All of that land would be, uh, in the city of South Fulton. And I worked with the residents, uh, in, uh, Creekside subdivision and surrounding areas where Coca-Cola built a warehouse directly behind their subdivision with a zero foot buffer. A zero foot buffer, not a five, ten foot buffer. It really should have been a fifty or a hundred foot buffer, but a zero foot buffer. We've got to ask better of Union City. They have to be more neighborly. They're building these warehouses in our backyard. They're building warehouses that are empty. They're building empty warehouses and trying to go sell them after they're built. It's ridiculous. And we've got to demand better from Union City. We need them to be more.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, the reason I ask these together because they contradict each other. So the second question from BK says, I wish you wouldn't have supported creating the city. Most residents would rather stayed unincorporated and more constituents should have been involved from the beginning, but they weren't aware and still aren't today. So that's, that's kind of a statement.
Everyone has their opinion about the city. Um, I don't know if most people, you know, like, yeah, that's an assumption. I don't know if most people wanted it or most people didn't. Most people voted for it. That's why we got a city. So I have to refute the underlying presumption of that statement. If most people didn't want it, we wouldn't have it. Uh, and so we, but guess what? Either way, now we have it and we have to deal with it. We have to live with it, right? And so we have to look for the best solutions. We have to look for the best answers. And we need our best and our brightest people. We need people that, you know, can not only pass the bar, but actually work in a law firm for twenty-five years, be a super lawyer, top music lawyer. We need people that act, you know, the old eighty-twenty rule. I'm part of twenty percent. I get stuff done. I'm not part of the eighty. And my service started before I became commissioner. I didn't start doing these things. I created my Black History Film Festival in two thousand eight, two thousand eight. I didn't get elected until twenty fourteen. I took office in twenty fifteen. So seven years before I took office, I started the Black History Film Festival. I've been on the board of Sycamore Foundation of Georgia since nineteen ninety-six. So I didn't start my service once I became commissioner, whether I became commissioner because of my service to my community.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Candidate Kelly.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? There was, the answer was kind of complicated.
Okay, they were two different related questions.
I, I believe they were.
One was on, why did you support the charter and legislation for the city of South Fulton to become a city? And then the opposite is stated in that I wish you wouldn't have supported creating the city. So just one is a statement more than a question.
Okay, yeah, I believe those were both, uh, towards Commissioner Arrington.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So the next question. Yeah, there, there's several more. This one comes from Carl Davis. And he's asking, how does collapsing districts not disenfranchise thousands? Why not work with the Democratic delegation versus making deals with the Republican Party?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again now?
Yes, from Carl Davis, how does collapsing districts not disenfranchise thousands? Why not work with the Democratic delegation versus making deals with the Republican Party?
I guess that would be for both candidates. Let me clarify for you answer. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Commissioner Nick.
Thank you. I mean, I think that, you know, voters were disenfranchised, uh, by the redrawing and the redistricting of the maps. Um, you know, I spoke to that earlier. We had one Democratic commissioner and one Democratic state rep. They circumvented the entire Democratic delegation and the local bill that would have allowed the districts to stay the same. The districts would have stayed ninety to ninety-five percent the same. Everyone would have maintained their district. However, one commissioner was interested in having her chief of staff run against me. So she redrew the lines in a fashion so that he could do that. Although she didn't know, or maybe she did know that he had moved to Fayette County. Um, so, uh, you know, we have to deal with this stuff as it comes and, uh, just push back. Uh, I did not work with the Republicans. That was, uh, the commissioner from District Six, uh, and the state representative, uh, Misha Maynor. They worked with the Republican Party. They circumvented the entire Democratic delegation. This is the same Republican Party that filed under my law office because I was talking out about the big lie about Trump. So I'm very passionate about this. Same group, same group. And so, you know, on, once you start working with the Republicans, then I don't know if I can trust anything else you do.
All right, Kelly.
Uh, you know, Commissioner, uh, Arrington can continue, uh, you know, with the whole Fayetteville thing. The, the fact of the matter is, uh, I went before the board for residency, for the residency challenge. Uh, to three to zero, they deemed me qualified to run. Uh, many people have multiple properties. He himself has multiple properties. And so, uh, you know, you can continue stating this whole Fayetteville, you know, uh, scenario all you want, but at the end of the day, I'm on the ballot. I'm not going anywhere. You tried to take me off the ballot with an illegal resolution. That failed. You tried to have one of your friends to, uh, do a residency challenge. That failed. Then you tried to go to, uh, the DA and tried to have her, uh, do some kind of investigation on me. Uh, and it's, it's well known that you, when you don't get your way, similar, you go and run to the DA to try to get them to do something. You did that with Paul Howard. And that's why, how you cost, uh, a homeowner association four, a four hundred thousand dollar lawsuit for malicious prosecution. So I guess you're trying to do the same thing in this case. But at the end of the day, um, what the, the, at the end of the day, the districts make, the district now makes more sense. Um, you know, it, it, the question itself had, is very assumptive in the fact that, um, it says that deals were made with Republicans. Uh, what they're not talking about is that the District Six office was excluded from the process. We had a process that started in November and where all, uh, all districts was supposed to get together and give their recommendations. Um, at that point, uh, the, the chairman actually blocked the maps from coming back. We did not see a map again until January, when we about to put it back on, on, for, to come up for discussion. And then all of a sudden, they had a map, uh, that wrote, uh, Commissioner Kadizia out of their, her district. And once again with the lie, I was in, in, in both the county's map and the new map, I was in the, the new District Five. And so this whole lie that, you know, Commissioner Kadizia.
Time, thank you. All right, so let's bring it back to the forum. I know Ron has some more questions in the chat. I'm gonna ask a question. So my question is to both candidates. If, I know Commissioner already has the seat and Kelly is going for the seat. So once you are the commissioner, my question is, what would be the perfect team that you can have to help you get all of the jobs done, needed, that the constituents need you to do? That we've asked for on this forum, from the sidewalks to family friendly, to new economic development. We have all of those concerns within your role. If you could pick four people to be on your team, who would they be and what would their, I would say, their position be on your team? And they don't have to be an attorney. You could think of anybody from any background. How could you utilize them? Think about this question. And thank you again, citizens, for being here. Thank you all for your questions, your concerns. I can hear all of the passion in everybody's questions. I can hear the passion in your voice from the chat. And I know the redistricting has definitely got everybody very much engaged. So I appreciate that. Now that I've given some time, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Arrington to answer my question. And I will have Ron, while we're doing that, Ron will be looking over the questions in the chat. Thank you.
So I don't know that I can identify four individuals offhand. I mean, I think what I want are independent thinkers. I want action people. I want people that do work. I want the twenty percent, not the eighty percent. Um, and so, you know, I am proud of the staff that I have now. I think that they do a great job. I'm proud of the staff that I've had over the years. Um, I think that they have represented not only me, but Fulton County and District Five well. And those that know us, the parents of the children that received the scholarships, the parents of, uh, from the Black History Film Festival, or the parents of the children that received scholarships from the It Takes a Village, uh, College Scholarship Program, uh, or the Right to Rise Program. They know the work that we've done. They've seen what we've done. And we do those things. I do those things outside of Fulton County, right? Those are just initiatives out of my office that I do in addition to the work that I do for Fulton County. And so, you know, um, we need people that, you know, I would be looking for independent thinkers. I would be looking for workers. Uh, I would be looking for people that take action. Uh, thinkers and doers are the type of people that I'm looking for.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Arrington. And I'm gonna go ahead and let Kelly give his answer. And immediately after you give your answer, I'm gonna give, uh, Commissioner Arrington his three minutes to wrap up because he has to go at eight thirty, okay? Kelly, it's on you. Can we unmute? Okay, there we go.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily pick people, but I will pick, uh, uh, backgrounds, uh, that I, that I would look for. Um, first, I would look for someone that's strong on policy. Like I said, um, moving forward, uh, Fulton County is primarily a legislative body, and we, we need someone that is excellent at creating sustainable and efficient policies. The next thing I would do is, uh, someone that was strong with communications. Someone, uh, you know, we are in a system right now that, uh, communications, uh, is changing. You know, we have TikTok. We have Facebook. We have social media. We have all these venues. And so I would look for someone that is well versed in all of those areas that we can get out the message in multiple ways to reach, uh, various generations, uh, of, of people that are in Fulton County. Uh, next, I would look for someone that, uh, is a strong community advocate, that's great on programming, that, that knows the community, uh, and that is very familiar with, uh, the South Fulton County community. And so those are things that I would, uh, look for. Uh, I'm, I'm, I would also look for, uh, specific, uh, not, uh, specific skill sets as opposed to just any particular, you know, person in general.
All right, thank you. Mister Commissioner Arrington, I'm gonna go ahead and give you your three minutes. Is that okay? Uh, let me first get clarification. Ron, will that be okay to go ahead? Cause it is eight thirty-two right now.
Absolutely. He said he has to go at eight thirty, so let's give him three minutes.
Yep, we wanna respect your time. All right.
Thank you so much. Uh, again, my name is Marvin Arrington Jr. Uh, I'm a father, uh, an attorney, uh, and a certified county commissioner. I received that certification again from the University of Georgia and Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. I was the first male, male in Fulton County to be a certified county commissioner. I'm also been designated as a super lawyer by my peers in the, in the legal profession. Uh, and also by Billboard Magazine is one of the top music attorneys for the last three years. I work hard on behalf of the constituents. I develop initiatives. I've developed summer programs for our youth. I'm mostly interested uh, in helping our youth and our seniors because they are the most vulnerable. And so I do everything I can to try to help them. I created a arts program that allowed, our art centers were empty during the day. So I created a program where our seniors could go do arts during the day. Uh, and so, uh, again, we've just done many initiatives, dedicated many money. If, if, if you don't wanna vote for me because you think I'm ugly, or you think uh, something else, but don't, please don't say that I haven't done anything. That, that is just a complete falsehood and a fabrication. And you might say that you would have done some things differently. You might say that you would not choose different priorities. But to just completely try to discount the work that we've done over the last eight years uh, is, is, is not, is not fair. And so, I'm, I'm here. I'm offering myself to serve. I think that I've done a great job of serving the residents of Fulton County. Uh, I humbly ask for your vote and your support, and I hope to earn your vote and your support. Uh, and I know I've got a district that is seventy percent new. I know that I've got a situation where you've got a city commissioner that redrew the district lines uh, so that her chief of staff could run against me. Um, the District Five lines are what they are. We have an election coming up. Again, I hope that you will vote for me. My name is Marvin Arrington. My daughter, again, a Westlake graduate, twenty eighteen. Uh, another daughter is at Westlake. And my almighty children, all four of my daughters attended um, Stonewall Tale and Santown Middle School. Fulton County schools are good enough for my children. And I tell you this, not only, well, I, I, so I, yes, I did move from City of South Fulton in twenty eighteen and purchased a house in Atlanta after my divorce. And, and when I did that, I purchased a new home. But in twenty twenty-one, my law office opened a business in the City of South Fulton on Roosevelt Highway. So I'm invested in the City of South Fulton. I'm a South Fulton business owner. And guess what? I'm human, just like everyone else. We gotta stop all of these attacks. Mister Kelly is not a bad person. I'm not a bad person.
Commissioner Arrington, thank you very much. And thank you so much for your time. Thank you for coming on. And we know, and thank you for serving. Yes, you are, Commissioner. And thank you for stepping up for that. So at this moment, we will go ahead and.
Please vote for the chat candidate of your choice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving forward, Ron, I'm gonna ask that all of the questions that we have moving forward, uh, since we only have one candidate here, that would be uh, Kelly. If we can reframe, since uh, Commissioner Arrington is no longer here, let's not put, since he can't rebuttal, let's just stick to the question. All right? Thank you.
Okay. Un- unfortunately, most of the, most of the things in the chat are statements and attacks, and I refuse to read anything about anybody's children. Uh, I think that's predictable as people are in there putting that in the chat. But um, here's one thing uh, that I'd want uh, Mister Kelly to address. And I understand that, that the Commissioner's not here to give a rebuttal, but there's been a report that he's been stopped, that Commissioner Arrington's vehicle was on his property. So I wanna know if he knows um, about that. Is there any truth to that? Mister Kelly.
We unmute Mister. He's muted. Can we unmute Robert? There we go.
Uh, hello, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Um, so what, uh, what has been happening? Yes, uh, during this elec- this has been an election uh, like no other. Um, and I was actually very disappointed um, by uh, many of the things that has been happening uh, since I put my hat in the ring to run and to serve the people of uh, South Fulton County. Yes, uh, there were people that came onto my property, took pictures of my cars and uh, and the license plate uh, and, and posted them online. Uh, one of them is a radio host. Um, and there is confirmation, and I, I'm, I'm not one to make uh, statements that I don't know are absolutely true, but I will say that there was people that said that uh, from the ring, that there was a black Mercedes similar to the one that uh, that my opponent drives. And it was the first place it was posted was on the radio's uh, uh, Facebook page of one, of someone that we know, we all know is one of my opponent's good friends. To me, uh, what I do believe is there are some things that are off limits. You know, people's children are off limits. Uh, coming on people's property is off limits. There are legal ways to go about if you have a concern with someone's residency, you put in a residency challenge. And, you know, that was done and I, and, and that was defeated. Um, and so anything outside of that, you know, they could have appealed, uh, they chose not to. Um, uh, with, excuse me, they should, they could have appealed with the Superior Court. They chose not to. Um, and so outside of that, you know, let's stick to running based on what we wanna do for the community. That's what I've done. If you look at my page, there's been no personal texts from me. Um, you know, towards my opposition. I'm running to, and simply stating what I wanna do for the community and why I, I wanna run and represent the community that I love, which is South Fulton County.
Thank you, Time. Rashida Musa Heatherhand, uh, Rashida Musa?
Yes. Yes, it's Musa. I had a question for Mister Arrington, but he's no longer here. So will he still be able to see my question or hear it later?
Uh, you can put, yes, you can post it in the chat. He will be able to.
I bought, I already posted it in the chat. It was overlooked. It was just my question was on the funding and what it was that he planned to do for the elders in the community. It seems as if they're left behind in so many decisions that they're making.
Okay, thank you very much. We will make sure that he gets your question. They will be forwarded, all the questions, and have an opportunity to respond.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Did you want uh, candidate Kelly to answer that, or just that was?
I mean, if, if that'd be cool, if he could tell me what it is that he plans on doing for our elders, you know, because it's so much funding that's been given out, and I don't want them left behind, especially the citizens that are in Camelot and the other neighboring areas that need it.
Okay, thank you very much for your question. Uh, candidate Kelly?
Sure. Um, you know, if you look on my website, one of the things I do address is our seniors. Um, I spend a lot of time with our seniors. Um, one of the things that they are concerned about is affordable housing. One of the things that they uh, concerned about uh, is having a multi, senior multipurpose center on this side of town. And those are things that we are, you know, very strong advocates for. Um, it was our, our office that put in the, the first, put it, first put it on the agenda uh, to do a feasibility study for the, the uh, multipurpose senior center uh, for Fulton County. Um, and so we believe that uh, well, we believe, and, and I will say that I believe, but when I say we, I mean, as a community, uh, because of all the seniors that I've spoken to, is that uh, senior services uh, need, their, their services need to be enhanced. And so I'm walking, I'm gonna pledge now, in, in addition to what I've been doing, to continue to work uh, to make sure that all the seniors uh, in South Fulton County feel heard, that their needs are met, and that we have adequate services uh, to, to um, address the needs that we have in South Fulton County uh, as seniors.
All right, thank you. We're gonna go to KB.
Um, my, my last question for you, Mister Kelly, is simply, um, how do you plan on engaging the citizens of your district if you are elected? And my question really comes from a, a perspective of, there are a lot of issues that some of us in some of these, you know, cities within, you know, the South Fulton area have had some serious issues with, and we have tried to engage uh, local officials. We've tried to engage uh, county officials. We have tried to engage state officials. And we simply have not gotten the, the backing and the assistance that we needed. And I feel as though, um, if your particular issue is not aligned with a particular agenda of a particular um, official, then it doesn't receive the priority attention that it, it needs. And these are not just individual issues, but these are community-wide issues. So how do you, as a candidate, propose that you will be um, engaging with your entire constituency um, more regularly and more effectively to make sure that everyone's needs are being addressed?
Uh, thank you so much for that question. Uh, I'll say, I'll say Ms. KB's, I said, I don't know your, your whole name. But um, you know, I think that's an excellent question. I think one of the things that we used to have um, a lot more than I think COVID kind of uh, interfered with that was uh, there used to be a lot of town halls. I remember when I was working with Commissioner Emma Darnell. Um, you know, every, I believe it was like every two months, she would have a town hall where people could come out and do exactly what you're saying to do. You know, we would come out and we can actually hear the community, you know, to, to not just assume what the community wanted, but we can hear firsthand from, from the community what their needs were and what they wanted. Um, what I do plan to do is I do plan uh, two, two parts. So I, I definitely plan to have uh, town halls where people can actually come in, 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 in person, you know, discuss what they wanna see in the community. But also, um, for those that, that are a little bit more uh, technical, technologically savvy, um, sending out surveys, you know, building a, a great um, uh, email list where we can send out surveys and, and for as many agendas as possible, actually getting feedback before we just vote uh, on, on things to, to see how does the community really feel. I plan to engage uh, neighborhood associations, uh, HOAs, uh, city council members um, in, in every way we can to make sure that before I make a vote, especially one that would impact a majority of citizens, that I'm actually getting feedback. Because at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're here to serve you, you know? Uh, the people are our bosses. And so it's, it's amazing to me that, uh, you know, we'd be uh, having in, in, in an environment where uh, other agendas, rather than the peoples, are what's served. But I made the commitment today that my agenda will be the people's agenda.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, we will move to Ron for a question in the chat, and as soon as Ron reads another question from the chat, we will go to Calvin.
Okay. This question is from Medina for Robert Kelly. What is your goal for making sure the underserved areas of South Fulton get the help that they need if you're elected?
Uh, thank you for that question. Um, one of the things I, and I, I, I kind of alluded it to it before, um, is making sure that we have smart policies. And one of the things that my public administration background does, it, it looks at not just the policies, but how we implementing those policies, right? We can, we can give a million dollars to arts. We can give a million dollars to veterans. But at, at the ground level, how are those actually being administered to make sure that the people uh, that it's intending to serve actually get served? For example, when we passed the American Rescue Plan, uh, you know, it, it was, we, we gave a lot of money uh, for mental assistance. But then, uh, when we started looking at, at the administration of it, uh, we began to realize that there were still a lot of people that were getting evicted. And so one of the things that I did was uh, work with uh, the Chief Magistrate Judge uh, Cassandra Kirk, and we spearheaded, spearheaded something called Project Safe, where we actually put uh, people in court at the time of eviction that could in, uh, interact with, uh, at the point of evictions, when they were in court about to get an eviction. It, it, we, we put uh, people in the courtroom that could say, hey landlord, hey, uh, you know, tenant, you guys are about to go through eviction. That is costing for everyone. We have money that's available in Fulton County. Uh, you know, can we step in at this moment and stop this eviction? And since we put in that program, we have had five hundred families that we stopped from being evicted. That is over four point seven million dollars um, that we were able to use of the funding for people that would have actually got evicted. So when we talk about underserved communities, it's making not only smart policies, but making sure the administration of those policies hit the intended audiences.
Thank you. All right, Calvin, if we can get Calvin unmuted to ask this question, then we'll go right back to the chat. It is eight forty-seven. We'll be getting ready to wrap up maybe two more questions from the chat.
Yes, could you hear me now?
Yes, perfect.
Perfect. Good evening. Uh, thank you so much for hosting this uh, um, little town meeting between the two candidates. But this uh, this is a question. I just wanna kinda like get into your thinking right quick about homelessness in our area. Along the Old National Corridor, there is, I couldn't even give you a number, but those hotel, the hotels along Old National Corridor are pretty much filled with homeless families. A lot of single mothers with children. And of course, along with that, you know, there's a lot of drugs, drugs and other activities that they're subjected to living in those conditions. Um, what, if, have you given any thought to how you could come up with any programs or assist in assisting some of these homeless families of getting into apartments? A lot of them have nine to five. They work jobs. They just can't come up with the funds, you know, two months rent, security and that type of thing. And uh, if not that specifically, just what's your thought on tackling um, a problem such as that, especially around the Old National Corridor where the hotels are?
I got you for that question. Um, what, what, what I believe is that sometimes we, we deal with the symptoms and we don't deal with the root causes. And I think uh, for many uh, of our policies, we need to start looking at, how do we start tackling the root causes of homelessness in Fulton County? Uh, a lot of, a lot of vet, of, a lot of our veterans, uh, you know, go through bouts of homelessness. A lot of people that have, uh, may have behavioral health issues, go through bouts of homelessness. A lot of people uh, that have substance abuse, um, often go through uh, bouts of homelessness. And, and, and in this new uh, pandemic, uh, you know, we're just seeing, you know, there are a lot of people that have just, you know, fallen on hard times. So I'm not, I'm not limiting the homeless problems to those specific, you know, areas or people. But um, but what I, what I do say is that we need to start looking at how do we start tackling some of those underlying root causes of homelessness and create, create policies around that. Um, you know, homelessness is, is, is a big deal. It's a big issue. It's going to continue to be a big, uh, big issue. Uh, but I think when we can start kind of dealing with those, some of those root issues like uh, that, that kind of create more of a homelessness problem, I think that's the way to go, to really start making an impact um, in, in that area.
All right, thank you. Ron?
Yes, thanks. This next question is from Rod Littles uh, for Mister Kelly. If elected, do you think you will be treated like your current boss by the chair? And if so, why?
Uh, I, I will say no, cause uh, we'll have a different chair. Um, if the, if the people, you know, do what I believe they will do, and, and they vote for change. And that is what I believe. I believe that South Fulton County and all of Fulton County, uh, it's, it's time for change. And, and so for everyone that is on this chat, uh, you know, I would just, you know, once again, recommend that, you know, we can't continue doing the same thing and expecting different results. Um, you know, we, we have people that have offered themselves up to serve our community. And, you know, I would just, you know, strongly encourage everyone uh, to, to make a decision for change. You know, Fulton County, we are in, at an inflection point that, you know, we can go either way, and it's time for the people of South Fulton County to, to, to be served in a way that we, uh, we should be served by the full board. And so, uh, I would say that uh, you know, my hope is that we would, we would have several new members of the board. But regardless of who is there, I'm willing to work with anyone that is willing to work with me. Um, and to, to push forth the agenda of South Fulton County. You know, just like I've been attacked during my, my campaign, you know, that doesn't faze me. I'm still going forward. I'm still going strong. I will still work to serve the people. And, you know, I'm, 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 I'm here. I'm here for the long run. And I'm here to, to be a true servant of the people of South Fulton County.
All right, thank you. Um, before we get to the last question with the hand up, it looks like Al, Al Vanetta Riley. Hold on before you ask your question. Ron, are there any additional questions in the chat? We're at eight. hold on before you ask your question. Ron, are there any additional questions in the chat? We're at eight fifty-two right now.
No, just a statement, so you can go on with that last question.
All right. Alvinetta Riley, it's on you.
Hi, thank you so much, and thank you all for this town hall and the opportunity to hear from both candidates. I did place a question in the chat, it may have been overlooked, but I was really hoping that it would be asked, so here, here it is. We, the citizens are truly, I get the feel that most of us are wanting to see candidates go into office and truly work on our behalf, even in the face of disagreement, even in the light of the differences that you all may share or, or the differences you all may have. And so I was really, really interested in what you both felt regarding working with people who had ideas different from your own. You did kinda touch on that just a few moments ago, and I appreciate that. But could you go into detail a little bit about your experiences in the past, working with others who have differing opinions, and how you really sought to come to some agreement for the, for the betterment of all and pushing self aside? Can you address that for all of us?
Sure, thank you for that question, Ms. Riley. You know, in, in, in any environment that, that we're in, you know, you're gonna have people that, that one, don't agree with you. You may not like their attitude, you may not, you know, like their disposition, but at the end of the day, you know, it's about the people, you know? And I think that at the end of the day, if we all can keep that in mind and, and put aside ego, if, if you ask anyone that, you know, that knows me or that, you know, has interacted with me for any substantial amount of time, one thing, you know, is that I, I try not to have, you know, I try to have a very low ego when it comes to, you know, making things about myself. I try to do my best to be a self, selfless person and to really always serve the people. And I think that if we can have more of our leaders, you know, stay focused in that regard, I think a lot of the issues that we're seeing on the board, we would, we, we really wouldn't see them, from my estimation. I think, I just, I just think that there's a lot, there's way too much ego, way too much pride, and way too much, too many people not putting what's important as their first priority, and that's, that's the people. And, and my vow to you, Ms. Riley, and to all the other people of South Fulton County, is that, you know, when I get into this office, you know, prayerfully, when you guys elect me on May twenty-fourth to sit in this seat, that I will always put the people's agenda first.
All right, thank you so much for that answer. I wanna say that is the end of questions, we all got through it. But this was a great time, a great night, and a great forum, so thank you so much. And we're gonna go ahead and give you your three minutes, your closing remarks. And after that, we will let Ron go ahead and officially close us out. Thank you all for the opportunity tomorrow.
And thank you, Yoshina, I think you've done a great job, and thank you all for this opportunity. Well, I'll, I'll just say this, you know, at the end of the day, Commissioner Arrington is an Atlanta man with Atlanta dreams and with an Atlanta agenda, now trying to run to be the voice of South Fulton County. Meanwhile, he's consistently demonstrated his lack of support for the city of South Fulton and South Fulton County. Commissioner Arrington did not support Fulton County having its own fire department. Commissioner Arrington did not support South Fulton being able to implement its own traffic routes when it came to having heavy track, tractor trailer in residential roads. Commissioner Arrington did not support the well-known and well-respected community advocate Rodney Littles to be appointed to the Development Authority, refilling his coffee was more important. Despite the great need for more, for mortgage assistance and nonprofit assistance in South Fulton County, Commissioner Arrington walked out twice right before the vote, denying this very much needed access to, to South Fulton County residents. During the pandemic, when our community needed Commissioner Arrington the most, his office in, in the South Fulton Annex remained closed, to the point that it even became a storage unit, okay? The only office that he had in South Fulton County was, was being used as a storage unit. When North Fulton Republican Bob Ellis moved to take detention ponds off the agenda, Commissioner Arrington stayed quiet. Now he's running to be our voice in South Fulton. What I would say is that if we, he talked about his record, if we looked at his record just last year alone, Commissioner Arrington missed two hundred and forty-seven votes, okay? Out of a little over six hundred votes, his record of, of actually votes is sixty-seven percent of the votes he was present for in twenty twenty. You can look it up on the Fulton County GA website, okay? He missed two hundred and forty votes either being absent or simply not voting. Commissioner Arrington currently has the most ethics complaints out of any current sitting commissioner and member of the board, current Board of Commissioners. If we add up all the, the taxpayer dollars that have went to pay in litigation due to Commissioner Arrington's unethical behavior, we, and that, that's in pending litigation and a future payouts, we could have paid for detention ponds, sidewalks on Old National and sidewalks on Enon Road two times over. So what I wanna say to everyone is that we need change in Fulton County. Commissioner, Commissioner Arrington is currently a walking liability for Fulton County, and the taxpayers simply cannot afford for him to continue to stay in office. So I'm asking that on May twenty-fourth, you vote for the only ethical choice, the only South Fulton candidate, which is me, Robert H. Kelly, to be your next South Fulton District Five Commissioner. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Ron?
I'd like to thank everyone for attending this meeting. And I'd like to let you know that a recording of this town hall will be available on our website at southfortencoalition.com. We'd like for you to please consider joining South Fulton Coalition. And again, you may visit us at southfortencoalition.com. Also, our next town hall meeting is April twenty-seventh for the Secretary of State race. And I'd like to give a great big thank you to Mister Marvin Arrington and Mister Robert Kelly. And Robert Kelly, a plus for you for sticking on and answering your constituents' questions. And I thank you for taking the time from your campaign to speak with us. So everyone, please have a blessed evening, and I'd like to thank our moderator, she did a wonderful job, Mr. Yoshina Bradford, thank you so much. And we hope to see you all at our next town hall forum. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, and just can I just say this, please visit my website, robkellyforcommissioner.com, and you can see all the things I didn't get to say and, and join the forum, all my initiatives, what I wanna do for South Fulton County. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, thank you all.
All right, good night.